The Columbus City Council meeting for January 18th, 2021 will now come to order. In compliance with the Open Meeting Act, Nebraska Revised Statute 84-1407, a current copy of the act is posted in this meeting room. Madam Clerk, would you please call roll?
Bulkeley.
Here.
Augustine Schulte.
Here.
Barr.
Here.
Hemer.
Here.
Jablonsky.
Here.
Kreshaw.
Here.
Lor.
Here.
Roth.
Here.
Schelling.
Here.
Mayor Bulkeley, the roll has been called.
Thank you. Mrs. Council President.
Father, thank you for the opportunity to serve our fellow citizens. Please give us your wisdom and guidance to make the proper decisions entrusted to this governmental body. May our conduct show respect, honor, and courtesy to each other as well as to all of our citizens. Amen.
Oh, say can you see by the dawn's early light? What so proudly we hailed at the twilight's last gleaming? Whose broad stripes and bright stars through the perilous fight? O'er the ramparts we watched were so gallantly streaming? And the rocket's red glare, the bombs bursting in air, gave proof through the night that our flag was still there. Oh, say does that star-spangled banner yet wave? O'er the land of the free and the home of the brave? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening. Welcome everyone to tonight's council meeting. If at any time during tonight's meeting anyone would like to come forth and talk to us about anything on the agenda, we'd ask that you please come to the podium. We'd ask you to give your name and address and try to keep your comments to five minutes or less. With that, we'll move on to the consent agenda.
Item four, consent agenda. The following items are considered to be routine by the city council and will be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a city council member or citizen so requests, in which event the item will be removed from consent status and considered in its normal sequence on the agenda. Item four A, minutes of the January 4th, 2021 city council meeting. Item four B, reappointment of Jack Gutierrez, Sandra Yonches, and Bruce Schmidt to the Board of Park Commissioners for three-year terms. Item four C, resolution number R21-03, approving lease to the hangar aircraft with Dale Gasper, Nancy Gasper, Jamie Gasper, and Jesse Gasper. For hangar number 1315-4, the Board of Airport Commissioners recommends approval. Item four D, resolution number R21-04, authorizing payment of various improvement projects. Item four E, finance department reports. And item four F, payroll and bills on file. Mr. Mayor and council, is there anything you'd like removed from consent status?
Mr. Mayor, I move that the items on the consent agenda be approved as presented.
Second. We have a motion and a second to approve any discussion. Seeing none, all those in favor signify by aye, those opposed nay.
Dennis, did you?
Oh, I'm sorry. I didn't see. I'm not ready.
Did you vote?
Pardon?
Did you vote?
Oh, yeah, I did.
Okay. It came up now. Okay.
Motion passes.
Item six, special presentations. Item six A, State of the City Address by Mayor Bulkeley.
Thank you. The state of the city of Columbus is good. When reflecting upon 2020, we must begin with COVID-19. Nothing has impacted our country or our community more during 2020. From quarantines, business closures, school closures, mask ordinances, our community has seen it all. But through all the adversity has come some great things. Our community stepped up and helped work through all of this. From huge increases in takeout orders at our restaurants when indoor seating was not allowed, to wearing masks, to social distancing, and all other precautions, our citizens helped each other out. Our industries, many of them deemed essential, not only operated during this pandemic, but many expanded and looked for more employees. We can be proud and feel a part of the pandemic solution with BD Medical being an integral part of the vaccination process, manufacturing needles and syringes right here in Columbus. Vaccines have arrived and the process of getting citizens inoculated has begun. There does finally appear to be light at the end of the COVID tunnel. Other city activities continued all through 2020. A dent has been put into our housing shortage. All over town, you see new construction. Residential, single-family homes, duplexes, townhouses, near the airport, the Armory, apartment complexes near the old Walmart and Menards. New housing starts abound all over Columbus. New construction continues. The Loop Maintenance Building along the parkway opened. The Pillen Family Farms offices and Great Plains Bank also along the parkway. And just north, the Columbus Community Hospital continued to enlarge its footprint on their campus. All of this making Columbus more of a medical destination. Businesses continue to thrive and expand. Columbus Hydraulics moved into their new facility. Expansion at BD Medical and many others doing internal remodeling to accommodate new processes. And although Columbus continues to have an extremely low unemployment rate, many manufacturers keep looking for employees. St. Bonaventure expansion was completed with the ribbon cutting this past September. The old Walmart continues its transformation with the opening of Freddy's, the apartment complex, and a soon-to-be-done Starbucks. The Police and Fire Department moved into their new facilities, the result of an overwhelming voter-approved bond issue from 2016. This giving our community awesome facilities to house our first responders for years to come. Road projects are never ending, and 2020 was no different. The 12th Avenue Viaduct was completed and opened. Third Avenue South to Fifth Street was completed and opened. Fifteenth Street completed, opened with final items to be completed this spring, and multiple small paving and patching projects all over the community. City infrastructure continues to improve to accommodate our growing community. Over $14 million in expansion was completed at our wastewater treatment plant. This will handle Columbus's needs today and the growth we anticipate through 2040. Working with FEMA, staff was finally able to obtain final approval for the repairs needed at Quail Run Golf Course. Some minor repairs and work was done during 2020, but the bulk of the necessary repairs had to wait for the official FEMA approval. It has been a blessing to have our Vanburg course to help carry the golfing needs through this trying period. Kudos to all who have helped during this strange time. Columbus golf, like golf all around the country, has thrived during the pandemic. You could not point to a better example of working together than the Joint JCC, the Joint Communications Center. A combined effort of the city and the county to develop and bring online this new facility. Put together to handle the E-911 needs of Columbus and Platte County, we had hoped from the beginning that we could also serve our surrounding area. And this has begun with the addition of Polk County, a win-win for all. The November election gave a resounding approval to the bond issue for a new community center to house our library, cultural arts, children's museum, and city hall. The old fire station and old community center are gone. Soon the library will move into its temporary home in the old police station, and work on this project will get underway. On a very positive note, there were very few personnel changes during 2020. Our Corps of City Workers is solid and experienced. They come to work eager to serve the citizens of Columbus and make sure the essential services you come to rely on are delivered. So even though COVID-19 will be what most people talk about when they reflect back on 2020, it is obvious, as I have pointed out, that Columbus has done some great things. And we will move into 2021 with current momentum that will carry us forward. 2021 looks to be another great year for Columbus. Thank you. We'll move on to public hearings.
Item seven A, public hearing. Citizen Advisory Review Committee Report of Activities Presented in accordance with the Columbus Economic Development Plan. Would you like me to briefly give you a report? The CARC, like the heading says, is the committee that oversees Columbus's economic development funds and makes recommendations to the council for usage of those funds. Every six months, I prepare a semi-annual report as a co-administrator of that fund. Within the last six months, the CARC has recommended two different fundings, and you, as the city council, have approved those. One being the Move to Columbus Digital Marketing Campaign that the chamber is moving forward with, and also a second round of Rural Workforce Housing Grant Application up to $750,000. So neither of those have been expended to date. So the worksheet, the financials that you see attached in your document do not... Those approvals have yet to come out of that balance.
Any questions? Seeing none.
Mr. Mayor, I move that the public hearing be closed.
Second. We have a motion and a second to approve this report. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by aye, those opposed nay. Motion passes.
Item seven B, public hearing amendment to the redevelopment plan for the Armory Neighborhood Redevelopment Area. ACE Oversized Storage Redevelopment Project located east of East 14th Avenue between East 23rd Street and 25th Street. The Planning Commission recommends approval.
Is there anyone here to speak against this project? Is there anyone here to speak for this project?
There. Mitchell Peterson, 3264 East 15th Avenue. I just have a little bit written down just to give you an oversight of it. We're gonna construct 30 commercial storage facility units, and they're gonna be 15-foot by 40-foot and 15-foot by 50-foot. But the main thing they're gonna have that traditional storage doesn't have is a 12-by-14 overhead door. So if it can go on the road, it can get in that door. A lot of like what our business takes shipment of is oversized. It doesn't fit in traditional storage, so it's just added capacity if businesses need it or if residents need it. The particular lot we're looking at doing it on, it was on the market for over 10 years. It's at the back of 25th Street, back by Curry Brothers Air. And the problem is the street goes uphill, the slope towards East 14th, and it's a fill issue. It's about three foot low. And so the fill alone is gonna be more than like what the cost of the lot itself was. So we actually looked at this initially and withdrew interest because of that, but once District 9 was drawn up for TIF, we thought it would be a little more feasible. And so I've got all that here too, but the main uses of the TIF are gonna be for filling in the lot and then the foundational perimeter that'll be needed for the drainage plan, so.
Very good. Any questions for Mitchell?
Mr. Mayor, I move the public hearing to be closed.
Second.
Thank you.
We have a motion and a second to close the hearing. All those in favor signify by aye, those opposed nay. Motion passes.
Item seven B1, resolution number R21-05, approving the amendment to the redevelopment plan.
Mr. Mayor, I move resolution number R21-05 be adopted.
Second. We have a motion and a second to adopt resolution R21-05. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by aye, those opposed nay. Motion passes.
Item seven C, public hearing. Application of Highland Park Evangelical Church for final plat and development agreement of Highland Park Church Second Edition, 4115 38th Street. The Planning Commission recommends approval.
Is there anyone here to speak against this proposal? Anyone here to speak for this project?
Mr. Mayor, I move that the public hearing be closed.
Just a second. Mr. Mayor.
We have...
I think somebody was gonna get up and speak.
Oh.
Okay.
We have a... You're welcome to, if you want...
I can answer questions if you may have.
Anyone have any questions for anyone involved in this project? Go ahead, Ben. We have a motion and a second. Did we get a second? We have a motion and a second to close the hearing. All those in favor signify by aye, those opposed nay. Motion passes.
Item seven C1, public hearing. Determine whether portions of Highland Park Church Second Edition should be included within the corporate city limits. The Planning Commission recommends approval.
Anyone here to speak against this public hearing? Anyone here to speak for this public hearing?
Mr. Mayor, I move the public hearing be closed.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to close the hearing. All those in favor signify by aye, those opposed nay. Motion passes.
Item seven C2, resolution number R21-06, approving the final plat redevelopment agreement and bringing portions of said addition into the corporate limits. You'll notice that the recommended motion is to remove this item from the agenda. That's because the city attorney and the developer's attorney weren't able to get a final draft of the resolution, so that will come to the next meeting. But we can go, as we did, we can go out and have the public hearings. So this item will come to the next meeting.
We need a motion and a second.
We do.
Mr. Mayor, I move that resolution number R21-06 be removed from the agenda.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to remove R21-06 from the agenda. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by aye, those opposed nay. Motion passes.
Item seven D, public hearing. Application of Granville Custom Homes Incorporated for final plat and development agreement of New Frontier Subdivision, East 14th Avenue and Armory Drive. The Planning Commission recommends approval.
Anyone here to speak against this public hearing? Anyone here to speak for this public hearing?
I move that the public hearing be closed.
We have a motion and a second to close the hearing. All those in favor signify by aye, those opposed nay. Motion passes.
Item seven D1, resolution number R21-07, approving the final plat and redevelopment agreement.
Mr. Mayor, I move resolution number R21-07 be adopted.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt resolution R21-07. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by aye, those opposed nay. Motion passes. Brings us up to report of city offices.
Item nine A, Police Department update on the mask ordinance. There is an update attached. The mask ordinance has officially been... The mask requirement of the mask ordinance has officially been lifted three days after the last meeting. So unless you have questions of Chief Shear, I didn't believe he needed to come up. Does anybody have questions of Chief Shear?
Any questions for the chief on the update? Okay.
Item nine B, Police Department Annual Report on the K-9 Deployment.
Chief, you wanna come up and just give that report for us?
Yeah. Charles Shear, Police Chief, Columbus, Nebraska. What I sent to the mayor and council was an annual report that we started when we brought Eros into our department. And what you'll see is that we had 60 in-house calls. In-house are those calls that were generated by the department. There were seven calls that were requested from outside agencies. So altogether, we had 67 deployments. If you take a look, I think you should have an attachment of the types of calls that we responded to and then the results of those calls. You'll see that we had 28 calls for detection, 28 patrol calls, 12 apprehension calls, and one evidence recovery deployment. We were called to Nance County for one deployment, Central City for a detection deployment, Nebraska State Patrol for a detection deployment, Platte County Sheriff's Office for two. One was a tracking situation, the other one was a detection, and then two at the Platte County Jail for detection. So Eros has been quite busy. We average about 1.3 calls, deployments, I should say, deployments a week between those two, Officer Velezquez and Eros. And so we've been pretty successful with that, and he's been quite an addition to the department. These arrests and these apprehensions would not have been made without their presence and their diligence. So we applaud their efforts and thank you for your support in allowing that to happen.
Any questions for chief?
Charles.
At what point, what number, do we start thinking about adding a second dog?
Well, I'm thinking about a second dog at some point in the future. Not necessarily because of the numbers that we're getting on the deployments, but because these guys are on-call 24/7. And at some point, we're gonna run that officer out. He's just gonna be tired of being at work or being on-call to work all the time. And so the strategy is at some point to try to get a second dog so that they're not on duty all the time. So when this officer and their dog is on, this officer and that dog is off, so that we can split that up. And I think that over time, as we become more successful, you'll see more of a need for that. And so that's a strategy that I've been discussing with Tara. At some point, when the population is right, you know, and the mood is right, we'll address that at that time. But right now, their plans are just to operate with one.
Very good. Thank you.
Thank you, chief.
Anything else?
Anything else?
A quick question, chief. You use the abbreviation A slash I in the report. What does that mean? It's in the detailed thing. Item number 64, for example, no A slash I, or is that A slash L?
Maybe 64. I would think no action or incident. They were looking for detection and they didn't find any. He was deployed, but they didn't find any with that. So there was no arrest or no incident?
No A, no arrest.
Right, and no I, no incident. So in other words, no report.
All right. Thank you.
Anyone else? Any other questions for chief? Thank you, chief.
Okay.
Thank you.
Bring us up to reports of council committees.
Item 10A, Public Property Safety and Works Committee, January 11th, 2021. Item 10A1, October through December 2020 Quarterly Report of the Traffic Control Device Committee. The Public Property Safety and Works Committee recommends to the mayor and city council that the October through December 2020 Quarterly Report of Traffic Control Device Committee be approved.
Mr. Mayor, I move that this report be adopted.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt this report. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by aye, those opposed nay. Motion passes.
Item 10A2, Request of the State of Nebraska for Permanent Easement in Roslon Cemetery in conjunction with the Highway 30 reconstruction project. The Public Property Safety and Works Committee recommends to the mayor and city council that the offer from the State of Nebraska in the amount of $730 for acquisition of the easement in Roslon Cemetery be accepted.
Mr. Mayor, I move this report be adopted.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt this committee report. Any discussion?
Does that just include the property, or is that moving the fence line and the trees?
That's just the property, just the permanent easement.
So we have to move everything?
That'll be part of the project costs. If their betterment costs, we're responsible for 100%. If they're part of the road reconstruction, we're part of 20... It's 20%, right? So that'll be a later.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by aye, those opposed nay. Motion passes.
Item 10A3, South Mobility Study Interim Recommendations for Eighth Street at the intersection of Third Avenue, 12th Avenue, 18th Avenue, and 27th Avenue. The Public Property Safety and Works Committee recommends to the mayor and city council that the South Mobility Study interim recommendations on Eighth Street at the intersections of Third Avenue, 12th Avenue, 18th Avenue, and 27th Avenue be approved.
Mr. Mayor, I move that this report be adopted.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt this committee report. Any discussion? Let me...
I do.
Well, I was just gonna ask, do you wanna let the public know what the recommendations are for Eighth Street, Third, 12th, 18th, and 27th Avenue?
I can go over in brief what those recommendations are. So at 27th Avenue and Eighth Street, that is to remove the westbound exclusive left-hand turn lane on Eighth Street to provide a wider lane for westbound through traffic. On 18th Avenue and Eighth Street, that's to remove the eastbound and westbound exclusive left-hand turn lanes on Eighth Street to provide for wider lanes for through traffic. On 12th Avenue and Eighth Street is to re-stripe the northbound and southbound approaches to Eighth Street to provide left-hand turn lanes, both north and southbound, and add left-hand turn arrows. On Third Avenue and Eighth Street, that is to add stop signs and stop-ahead signs on the east and westbound approaches to the Third Avenue intersection. So then the intersection would be a four-way stop.
Will 18th Avenue continue to be a four-way stop?
18th Avenue will continue to be a four-way stop, correct? Yes.
Even though it doesn't go anywhere north?
So I had a couple inquiries on 18th Avenue, 18th, yeah, 18th Avenue westbound, leaving the left-hand turn lane. Or to be utilized for the church and the school down the street.
Oh, okay. If that is a recommendation, what you would... If that's something you want us to take back to Traffic Control Device Committee to consider, you could amend the motion to, rather than adopt the report, adopt a report with the amendment that we re-look at the 18th Avenue southbound. Is that what you said? Or?
Yes.
So any, the left hand, so it would be eastbound or westbound?
Westbound.
South turning?
South.
Okay.
Okay.
If we may, yes.
And Dennis, you had a question? We'll wait on setting, doing an amendment until we hear everything.
I cannot support this study. I don't believe there is a traffic mobility problem on A Street. The traffic seems to move along quite well on A Street. It is a traffic problem, not a traffic mobility problem. And besides that, I mean, I don't have too much of a problem with all the changes on the avenues except on Third Avenue, A Street and Third Avenue. There's two families there that live at that intersection, and both of their driveways back out onto A Street. And I don't think they're gonna be too happy trying to back out of their driveways when there's traffic or cars blocking their driveways. So I mean, I would vote for this report if we could amend the four-way stop at A Street and Third Avenue.
Just my question, is this... This is only in the report form. This is not a final resolution adoption.
If the report is adopted by... The practice is that traffic control recommends traffic changes, and as soon as the council approves them, then we go ahead and proceed with them?
With a resolution or ordinance?
With installing them.
This is a done deal, whatever we decide tonight.
I think the four-way at Third and Eighth is probably a culmination of the growth that's happening in that area and the [inaudible]. and the continued growth that's gonna continue in that area with the school and everything.
The number of vehicles on all directions warrants a four-way stop.
You know, and I think if you're not traveling during those really key times, you probably don't see that. And I think, though, we've got some neighbors that live in that neighborhood daily would probably disagree with you, Dennis, but that's what we can do. That's the good thing about this. We can agree to disagree. I think the Eighteenth Street stop sign, whether the traffic counts right for it or not, I think some of that might also be just a little bit of speed control on Eighth Street, because without it, you don't have anything that slows anybody down. And I know that's sometimes a concern. Maybe that's not an engineering, maybe that's not how the engineers term it, but I'll tell you, that makes some sense. But we've got one motion, I think we probably should look to see if we could have two amendments. Dennis would like to see one, Troy would like to see one. We'd like to see an amendment for the westbound south turn at Eighteenth.
To remain.
And Eighth to remain. Is, we have a motion for that, do we have a second?
Second.
Do we have a motion and a second for that amendment? Am I doing this right, Neil?
Yeah, so at this point, you would vote to incorporate that into the motion.
Okay.
That passes.
Then ask it.
Then you can take up the next one and add that into, and if that passes, we'll take the whole project.
And then ask.
Then you take the whole project as amended, or if this person.
Okay, I thought so, but I wanted to make sure. So we have an amendment on Eighteenth and Eighth, and a second. All those in favor signify by aye, those opposed nay. Charlie, you in?
If there's a problem recording your electronic vote, please try again. So I voted three times.
Only allowed one.
Where are you living?
One legal vote.
What state do you live in?
Are you a I or a nay? Okay.
Early and often.
Motion passes.
Okay, so just for clarification, that means the motion is as it is on the board looking at it. You didn't vote to approve.
Right.
Right.
The motion's still in, somebody else wants to make.
So Dennis would like to make a motion to not have stop signs at Eighth and Third.
To not have four-way stops.
To not have four-way, yeah, I'm sorry. To not have the four-way stops put in at Eighth Street and Third Avenue. Do we have a second for that motion?
Run the motion by again, please.
The motion would be to not put a four-way stop at Third Avenue and Eighth Street.
Leave it as is.
Leave it as is with the stop signs on Third Avenue, north and south. We have a motion in that, do we have a second? Motion dies for lack of a second. We have a motion, I need a motion to pass the A ten eight point three.
We've already got the.
We already got it, okay. So now we vote to do it with the amendment that passed, all right? We have a motion and a, do we have a second also? We have a motion and a second?
Yep.
Do we have people in the audience that wanna do it?
I don't think to this one.
To this, okay, thank you.
Excuse me, I'm sorry. Were we still talking about the stop signs on Eighth Street?
Well, it got, but there's no motion to take them out.
Okay, so they're gonna, they're going forward as she stated?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Did we get a second? I'll second it.
It's been seconded.
Okay.
We just have to wait for a vote now.
All right, all those in favor signify by aye, those opposed nay. You're still not going in, Charlie?
No.
Okay. Motion passes. Do we need John, do we need John to say?
John, did you mean to abstain?
I thought I voted. I'm having the same problem that Charlie is.
Well, your vote, your vote, your vote has been recorded as abstained. Do you wanna yea or nay?
No, I did not mean to vote for abstain. I voted for yea.
Okay, well, that's why we wanted to clarify.
I'll change that for the record, yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right.
Okay. Item ten A four, Sidewalk and Ramp Location Policy in Conjunction with the Third Avenue from Eighth Street to South Third Street Project. The Public Property Safety and Works Committee recommends to the mayor and city council that crosswalks be installed at Third Street and Third Avenue, and the approaches along Third Avenue from Eighth Street to South Third Street be widened to achieve a ninety-degree angle.
Mr. Mayor, I move this report be adopted.
Second. We have a motion and a second to adopt this committee report. Any discussion from council? Any discussion from the public?
All right, Rudy Brunkhorst, two fifty-five, Third Avenue, Columbus, Nebraska. I think it's lot eight. When you're talking the ramps and the sidewalks, I know a chance Rick called me this morning, but I'm confused. There was more brought up before you guys amended this on, I believe it was December seventh, when we're back here a little over a month ago. There was lights brought up, there was other sidewalk issues, drainage, and it seems like we hit two out of maybe the six that was brought up. And that traffic control meeting that you told us that was a week later, we were told we couldn't go to. So I mean, I guess I'm kinda confused. Like, I feel like we're only getting twenty-five percent here.
And we'll have Rick come up and address that. And if we're not satisfied with what we're hearing, we can continue to do some homework and get answers for you. When I was, I was asked about the traffic control committee meeting, and it's open, I mean, all our meetings are open, but it's not one that generally public comes to. It's, issues go there and they get discussed and then come here for further discussion. It wasn't that you weren't welcome there, it's just normally, nobody, no, but, well, it is a public, but usually nobody goes.
Okay.
And so when I talked to Tara.
Well, that was because of COVID.
Yeah, well, and COVID was going on. It's just not a meeting set in this type of environment.
Okay.
All our meetings are open to the public when we have those.
Okay.
What happens at that meeting comes here for what we're having right now, for this kind of discussion.
Okay, so I guess first thing, let's go with the sidewalks. What did they, I mean, what was the final response on it? Where do we stand on just the sidewalks itself?
To Rick Bogus, city engineer. Okay, on the, my understanding from that committee meeting that we are looking at three intersections to put ADA crosswalks across Third Avenue. And that would be at Third Avenue and Third Street, Third Avenue and Dawn Drive, make sure I'm getting these right, and Third Avenue and Fourth Street. So as far as crossing Third Avenue, adding ramps on one of the legs of Third Avenue and Third Street, Third Avenue and Dawn Drive, and Third Avenue and Fourth Streets, that was one thing understood. Second thing was at each, at every one of the intersections, I think there are seven of them, where the east or west or east-west sidewalks come into Third Avenue is to make sure they come in at, cause place extra concrete to make sure they come in at ninety-degree angles to help with turning. So that was all the intersections of Third Avenue, I think there's seven of them. So that's the way I understood the committee report to be.
I guess, I guess I was, I mean, I guess, as far as the approaches goes to sidewalks, we were gonna make sure they're defined and going straight across the east-west. You know, the one problem we had was like, especially in my driveway, I got two pedestrian walk signs and they go straight into my driveway. So if you got little kids and you got a bigger truck and you're backing up in your driveway, being we have no lighting, it's bad.
Okay, and just for clarification, you're talking about lighting, like the lighting of the pedestrian cross signs like at Centennial Street?
I'm talking about lights down there.
Oh, street lights, okay.
Cause if you come up tonight, this evening, if you, Ryan Councilman, wanna drive down there, we got five lights on the east side of Third Avenue, and there's nothing on the west side.
Right, so Loop Power District is looking at putting in the lights, and they're gonna give back to me with the layout and costs, so we just don't have that yet. But that's in the process.
Okay, I was kinda hoping that would be, cause when we signed this contract here with Jeremy Mahler with the State of Nebraska, he said from the day they started our contract, it was gonna be one year complete. And earlier tonight, Mr. Volkley here made a statement, which was a great statement. I take a lot of pride in this town, but I feel it come a little incomplete cause our side is not done. You see what I'm saying, like?
Yeah, and.
We're just not, I felt it was a great statement, I loved it, I'm proud, but we just didn't hit the nail quite on the head, you know, we're not there.
Right, so on the, on the streetlights, that wasn't part of the project, but that was part of what occurs now, because Loop Power puts in our streetlights for us. So it wasn't part of the project and the payment of the project, but it's an agreement that we have with Loop Power, so that's why it's come a little later.
Like going forward, say I live on another street in this town and this happens, can we incorporate this in there? Cause I look at the north side of Eighth Street on Third Avenue, going to that viaduct, it's got streetlights. When it was done, it was done one hundred percent, the sidewalks were done completely. It's done. They didn't have to wait. I signed this project in eighteen, it's now two thousand twenty-one. Mr. Mahler with State of Nebraska said it'll be one year from when you start. And I get, in two thousand nineteen, we had floods. Two thousand twenty, we had COVID nineteen. I get it, I understand, that's why I'm here tonight, three years later, per se. That's why I'm trying to get resolution to all this. So, you know, with the lights, the sidewalk issues, the curb, the gutters, the, here with the six inches of snow we had, you people, I mean, I wish you could come see the flood we have down there cause we don't have proper drainage. And this is a brand-new street. And we as residential owners are paying for it, along with the tax dollars and everything else. I mean, if the State of Nebraska come on, looked at, they'd shake their head and go, this is a brand-new street, it should drain. I mean, longevity, people ain't gonna live down there if you got a flood. You know, I mean, I guess, I just, resolution was tonight, I was hoping to come and you'd say, yeah, we're gonna get these sidewalks in, your approaches are gonna be done, April one. Great. I, like I said, I brought my map here tonight, I'll offer you my property to lay your, to get these kids straight across the street and keep them out of my driveway. You know, and I just, I'd like to see it move forward. You know, what's the resolution? You know, our driveway, we talked this morning, and you were gonna give me an answer, hopefully. The driveway is shorter going to my house, it needs to be widened twenty-eight inches. You know, I guess, I'd like to see all this done so I can finish our house there. You know, going forward, I guess, is there a chance we can get some answers tonight, or we have to wait for another vote to get to another vote, to get to another study, to get to a vote? You know, that sucks, I'm sorry. It does, it's frustrating, especially, I know you as a city want my check here next month. So I'd like an answer before I write that check or bring it cash. I'm sorry. I mean, I shouldn't be apologizing.
No, you shouldn't. So here's what I wanna ask. If we were to set up a meeting between any and all of you homeowners that have concerns, we need, you know, an appropriate date that that would work? Get you there, have everything laid out, and then it gets followed up with, and followed up with completely? You sure can?
Just like we did on the last committee report, you guys can make a motion to add in other crosswalks if you wish. You can make a motion to address the street issues so we can move forward with them. And the other issues that aren't as, don't need council action, like addressing some drainage, if there's some drainage issues, or getting the lighting done with Loop, those aren't things we need to bring back to the council.
No, but they need to feel that we're following up with them.
Absolutely, but that's what I'm saying. We can address what we can address now, and anything else, I can personally manage and make sure that we get addressed here going forward. But I would hate to table this and not get those other crosswalks. If that's, if that's the resolution the neighborhood wants to see tonight, you have that ability tonight. That was my point.
I would think that the neighborhood would be comfortable if you would stand behind the fact that you would follow up with all the other issues that have been decided and let us amend this today or however it needs to happen to move it forward so that we can bring resolution to these concerns and these issues.
And here's one thing I ask.
You can ask, you have the podium, you can ask whatever.
Well, when we do do this meeting, I'm more of a hands-on.
I agree.
I would love to walk down the street with you, any of you. I mean, when I work out here with the tracks for the railroad, we do things hand-on. You gotta be there, you gotta see it, I mean, it's more shadow. And I can explain it a lot better than I can pointing at a map saying, well, you know, I have a green, evergreen right here. I mean, I can tell you a lot better, and I can show you a lot better when you're there to see it.
Did we not go down there one time? Excuse me? Nobody's come down?
Oh, I went, I went.
I've had other people come down.
I mean.
Shulte has come down.
But nobody, nobody.
Tara Watchhorn.
Yeah, thank you.
I had, I'd asked for Rick to come down, and I've had people like Mueller-Sprinkler show up at my door and other people, but not personally Rick, so. And I do have pictures, I don't know if anybody wants to see them, but I do have pictures of like the drainage of just this last snowstorm outside my property, right in the corner of Third Avenue. And, or sorry, yeah, Third Avenue and Centennial Street, as well as like the crosswalks and stuff like that. You don't have to look at them, but I do have pictures of the drainage. And it is a problem, it's not just now, but before the new construction. So, which we were told that once this Third Avenue construction took place, that with the drainage ditch, the drainage ditch that went through my yard, once that was taken out, that this would be, that would no longer be a problem. And I do agree with Rudy in regards, they did tell us one year. Clearly, we know things happen and it's nature, we can't really control that. So we, I feel we've been very patient with things, but as far as the crosswalks, I personally do feel there needs to be more than just one crosswalk along Third Avenue with the amount of children and families that go down Third Avenue. I think with Third Avenue being completed, we've seen an influx of people riding the, over the viaduct, down towards Quill Run, around and back. I mean, it's almost become like a bike trail. And I, you know, last month, or in December, you know, the sidewalk cuts off on the west side, and then you have to cross over to east side to be able to get it. But there's no specific crosswalk, there's no east-west. And that, to me, is a huge concern. And my property specifically is the only one, I haven't figured out why, but my property specifically is the only one that has a really wonky sidewalk, and it curves, so I'm a visual person too, so I'm gonna draw a little picture for you. So if I'm going east, I curve to go south. In order to go north, and I've watched several children take a dump right in the middle of my property. So they're going to take, instead of going right, they're gonna go left, they have to literally go here and turn to be able to turn their bike, their stroller, whatever it may be. And I don't know why my sidewalk was like that, I have no idea, but I, I think that that definitely is a safety concern, not just for myself, but anybody who's riding or walking along that sidewalk. And I took pictures of several along the way of Third Avenue, just to show that mine is the only one like that, I'm not quite sure why, so.
But you're also the main entrance to Centennial.
I am.
And now they've blocked the entrance off from the west side. So we are the, will you come in on Third Street, Centennial, and Fourth Street? We are the main entrance exit out of there, minus the one in front of the volunteer fire station off Eighth Street.
Fifth Avenue.
So what was, what did you suggest then, that Rick and Tara, you were gonna, or Mayor, what was your suggestion that they would meet?
Well, no, that we're not gonna do the meeting. What Tara would like to do is have any amendments that we feel make sense to give some, keep things moving along, possibly, possibly a crossing at each one of the intersections. I mean, right now, we've just, we've, the committee came forward with a proposal to put in one crosswalk.
Okay.
So, I mean, we can amend that any way possible to keep this moving. Tara will work with Rick to make sure we work with them on these other items that have been brought up. Cause tonight, we can't solve a discussion with Loop Power or some other things like that, but we can make sure we get that moving and done.
So.
So that's where, I mean, that's kinda where we are right now.
So the number of crosswalks that you would like in your neighborhood on your street are how many?
I don't have a specific number like requested, I don't know like the rules of what.
Or Tara, do you have a, sorry, either one, I mean.
It's all different, Tara.
That's okay, no, no, that was either one of you.
For both Tara, but the, there are some crosswalks across Third Avenue. Where there is not crosswalks is where there's a T-intersection. So, but that is, where there's Ts is more south, and where there's cross intersections is more. So, but that is, where there's Ts is more south, and where, where there's, uh, cross intersections is more north. And really, there is a, there is a crosswalk at Centennial Street and Third Avenue. It's just not right at the intersection, it's a little bit adjusted north, because there's several driveways off to the side. So what we were, um, where we can add crosswalks going across Third Avenue is Third Street, Dawn Drive, and Fourth Street. That would be three additional to what is there today. And the issue with the sidewalks, which you can see well on this picture, this isn't her, is that yours?
That's mine.
Um, it, is, that's what we were talking about?
Yeah.
That's mine.
No, I don't think so, but, it's okay, but this shows it, yeah. So we, that's in the motion already, to get the ninety degrees, right?
That's part of the motion.
So that is, um, gonna be addressed, but if you wanted to do all three of the crosswalks, that's, the, the, um, change to the motion would be to add in Dawn Drive and Fourth Street, cause Third Avenue is already part of it, just for clarification.
And then is there anything else of the, of the things that these citizens have requested? Is there, this is the only thing that we can put into this?
Everything else we can handle, I'll handle in-house.
I, I just have a, I have a question, um, need to explain to me about the Loop. They're the ones that put the lighting in, is that?
Yep.
Okay, and then I'm gonna ask, why was it the lighting not put in on the?
Yeah, I would have to defer to Rick on that. This project, though, this paving project has been on the state's books for twelve, fifteen years.
Yeah.
You know, and at that time, it was much more rural than it is today. Could it have been adjusted? Sure, was it an oversight, probably? But it is in the works, and Loop always installs streetlights. They do the design, they do the install.
That's what I was wondering, why, why it wasn't designed and put in, I mean, that-
Yeah, I think it's just the very, very extended timeline of this project, unfortunately, but we will get it rectified.
Okay.
Well, then I would make a motion that, uh, there be an amendment to this committee report with, um, the additional crosswalks at-
Dawn Drive and Fourth Street.
Second.
And also add the, the, well, you said the lighting you were gonna take care of.
Yep, that's not part of this.
Okay.
And the ramps. The ramps was part of this, right?
The ramps are, that was part of the motion already.
Okay, I'm talking the driveway ramps, is that part of this?
The driveway ramps.
Cause they were shorter than everybody else's house.
The width he's talking about?
Yeah, I brought that up with Rick. So like, when they come off the approach of the street, they shortened it, which they told us here in the contract, we're gonna shorten your approach, that's fine. So they shortened the width, but when they got to the top of the driveway, they didn't match the house. So if your house is twenty foot, they laid seventeen.
Okay.
See what I'm saying?
Yeah, we can address that.
They, they narrowed it, and I don't understand why we wouldn't match the house. If it's a two-car garage, you're not gonna lay a one and three-quarters cement pad.
I agree. Well, we, I don't think that that needs to be included in this action, but that will be included in our discussions going forward.
On the seventh of December.
Yep.
Are you comfortable that we will move forward with what we can do, and we've got people involved to?
Yeah, I, I, I'm, I'm happy we're involved, I, I personally would like to see him down there. I would personally take it for a walk, you gotta catch me in between wrestling meets and wrestling practice, but-
We'll be there.
I will surely, surely take you down there. I mean, I, I, I just, I would like result. I mean, and I know everybody moving forward down there would like result. We'd like to just be done with it and enjoy the nice streets and sidewalks we do have.
We will resolve the issues, and I'll be down there.
Do they only be brought up tonight, or can we just discuss it later?
No, we can just discuss it later, yep, yep.
All right, do we have a second on that mo, motion? We have a motion and a second to amend, uh, ten A four to include crosswalks at Dawn Avenue and Fourth Street?
Dawn Drive and Fourth Street.
Dawn Drive, Dawn, Dawn Drive and Fourth Street?
Third is already included.
Third is already in it, the amendment is for, is for Dawn Drive and Fourth Street. Um, the ramps are already in it, and then the rest will be followed up separately. Any other discussion in regard to this?
I just wanna commend the people in this neighborhood for, for the action that they're taking and the respectful manner in which you're doing it. And it, just to have your involvement in your neighborhood says a lot for you. So, thank you for, for continuing with that, being persistent.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by aye, those opposed nay?
I have to do another one.
Yep.
It ended up twice on there, but, there you go. To adopt the report.
Okay. We approve the amendment to ten A-
We approve the amendment, yeah, now we have to approve the-
Who's the motion?
Now approve the emotion, ten A dash four. Do we have any discussion?
We just need to move to have the report, the committee report adopted.
The amended report approved, yep.
It's already been motioned and seconded.
Yeah, under Roberts' rules, you have to-
Just go back and do that and clean it.
The amendment, then the, the motion that was pending is back.
That's right.
All those in favor signify by aye, those opposed nay?
Not Neil's rules, they're Roberts' rules?
Motion passes. Thank you all. It's up to Public Finance Committee, okay, I'm sorry, we still have another committee report.
Item ten B one amendment, so this is, uh, item ten B, Public Finance Judiciary and Personnel Committee of January twelfth, two thousand twenty-one. Item ten B one amendment to the municipal recognition program to add Columbus bucks as a service award option and increase the amount paid for each level of service by ten dollars. The public, the Public Finance Judiciary and Personnel Committee recommends to the mayor and council that the amendment to the municipal recognition program to add Columbus bucks as a service award option and increase the amount paid for each level of service by ten dollars be approved.
Mr. Mayor, I move that this committee report be adopted.
Second.
Have a motion and a second to approve this committee report, any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by aye, those opposed nay? Motion passes.
Item ten B two amendment to the personnel manual with, with regard to holiday pay, compassionate leave and accrual of vacation and sick time. The Public Finance Judiciary and Personnel Committee recommends to the mayor and city council that the amendment to the personnel manual regarding holiday pay, compassionate leave, and accrual of vacation and sick time be approved.
Mayor, recommend the report be adopted. Second.
Have a motion and a second to adopt this committee report, any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by aye, those opposed nay? Motion passes.
Item ten B three amendment to the schedule of fees to accommodate operations associated with permitting software. The Public Finance Judiciary and Personnel Committee recommends to the mayor and council that the amendment to the schedule of fees regarding permits be approved.
Mr. Mayor, move for the adoption of this report.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt this committee report, any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by aye, those opposed nay?
This, this computer has a mind of its own.
What's your vote?
Your vote, John? I'm working on it, there we go.
There we go.
Passes, brings us up to new business.
Item thirteen A, appointment of Kyle Linganfelter as fire lieutenant.
Gentlemen, with your permission, the mayor would like to submit the name of Kyle Linganfelter for appointment to the fire lieutenant position at the, at this meeting. Per council rules, the two-week waiting period is waived for an appointment of a paid firefighter. Mr. Linganfelter was one of the candidates that were certified for fire lieutenant by the Civil Service Commission at their meeting held December seventh, two thousand twenty. Kyle Linganfelter has been employed as a firefighter, paramedic for the Columbus Fire Department since two thousand and four. He is also currently employed by Central Community College as EMS coordinator and has previously worked for Midwest Medical Transport as a paramedic. He holds an associate's degree in paramedicine from Northeast Community College in Norfolk, Nebraska. He also holds his strategies and tactics for firefighter operations from Southeast Community College in Lincoln, Nebraska. Kyle is a, is certified as firefighter one, firefighter two, fire officer one, instructor one, hazmat technician, and EMS instructor. He is a national registered paramedic, as well as an American Heart Association Basic Life Support Instructor. He is a Columbus resident. Do we have a motion to ratify the mayor's appointment, please?
I move that Mr. Linganfelter be ratified.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to ratify this appointment, any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by aye, those opposed nay? Motion passes, congratulations, Mr. Linganfelter.
Item thirteen B, comments from the mayor and city council members. In compliance with the Open Meetings Act, no discussion may be held on this item.
Do we have any comments from council members this evening?
Just like to commend the mayor on his re, uh, state of the address, city address. I think we sometimes lose the, all the positivity that this, uh, city has done, and it's kinda nice to hear all over again, and, um, I think it was a well, well-written and well-stated address. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Councilman, I will say that it's a team effort by both council and staff, and, and I did have to even think twice when I mentioned Third Avenue to fifth with, with my audience out here. Any other council comments?
No, good job, Mayor.
All right, I have nothing this evening, we'll move on to resolutions.
Item fourteen A, resolution number R two one dash oh eight, approving the agreement with the Columbus Rural Fire Protection District.
Mr. Mayor, recommend resolution number R two one dash zero eight be adopted.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt resolution R two one dash zero eight. Any dis, uh, any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by aye, those opposed nay? Motion passes.
Item fourteen B, resolution number R two one dash zero nine, approving the deed of dedication from John Oberus, perpetual easement for public right-of-way in the, in the intersection of Forty-first Avenue and Eleventh Street.
Mr. Mayor, I move that resolution number R two one dash oh nine be adopted.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt resolution R two one dash oh nine, any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by aye, those opposed nay? Motion passes. Ordinance is on our first reading.
Item fifteen A, ordinance number two one dash oh five, correcting ordinance number two one dash oh two, pay plan to include the twenty-twenty, twenty-twenty-one pay scale table.
Mr. Mayor, I move that the rules be suspended and ordinance number twenty-one dash zero five be read by number only.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to suspend the rules and read ordinance number two one dash oh five by number only. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by aye, those opposed nay? Motion passes.
Ordinance number two one dash oh five.
Mr. Mayor, move for the adoption of ordinance number two one dash zero five.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt ordinance number two one dash oh five, any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by aye, those opposed nay? Motion passes. Ordinance is on their second reading.
Item sixteen A, ordinance number two one dash oh four, amending the multiple sections of chapter thirty-three of title three of the Columbus City Code to update and make organizational changes for the fire department. No motion is necessary, this is second reading.
Ordinance is on their third reading.
Item seventeen A, ordinance number two zero dash three two, adopting the unified land development ordinance.
Mr. Mayor, move for the ordinance number thir, twenty dash three two be adopted. Second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt ordinance number two zero dash three two, any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by aye, those opposed nay? Motion passes, and I, I'd like to thank staff for the effort they put into bringing forth this change in our ordinance to, the public might not realize it, but this ordinance governs so much of the development that happens in our community, and it hadn't had a facelift in over twenty years. Little things have been changed from here and there, but not the bulk of this ordinance. It's a big piece of work, it means a lot to our community and its future, and it took a lot of time and effort, and it's finally done, so congratulations.
Yes, thank you.
Brings us up to consideration of payroll and bills on file.
Item eighteen A, ARL Credit Services.
Mr. Mayor, I ask to be abstained from voting on this agenda item, because I am owner of ARL Credit Services and therefore have a conflict of interest.
Mr. Mayor, I move that council member Jablonski be allowed to abstain from voting on this agenda item and to suspend the city council rules requiring him to leave council chambers during the discussion and vote on this agenda item.
We have a motion and a second to allow Councilman Jablonski-
I think we need a second.
No, we have a, we have a motion, do we have a second?
A second.
Now we have a second, we have a motion and a second, any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by aye, those opposed nay? Motion passes.
Mr. Mayor, I move that the bills from ARL Credit Services be approved. Second.
Have a motion and a second to approve the bills from ARL Credit, any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by aye, those opposed nay? Motion passed, meeting adjourned.